Alright. Not a motion, he just moved some say.
Yes.
Okay. So, I will thank you. We'll go ahead and move back, back into regular session at five fifty-nine. You got us covered for a time, five fifty-nine?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Alright, um, do we have? Okay, we don't have any comments, so we'll move past that. And we'll quickly take care of minutes from prior meetings. So the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent Schools in Pursuit to Education Law, approves the October seventeen twenty twenty-four Regular Board of Education meeting minutes as presented. A motion from Chelsea and a second from Matt. All in favor, aye. Any opposed? None, motion carries. Thank you. And that takes us to the work session, October twenty-fourth. Uh, the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent Schools in Pursuit to Education Law, approves the October twenty-four twenty twenty-four Regular Board of Education meeting as presented. Motion Chelsea and a second from Matt. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Very good, thank you. And we've decided to put our student update pretty early in the program and I just wanna say, I already did, but welcome to Randy and Michaela. Um, the goal here is to put you guys early on. We'd be glad to have you stay, but we recognize that you have a lot of activities and things that you'll need to do or want to do. And so we'll invite you to share your part early on and then stay as long as you want to or you're able to. That's all right for you guys? Alright. Do we have a plan for? You guys ready to go?
You're ready, you're up.
Okay. You can stay in your seats or you can go in whatever you feel comfortable with.
Hi, I'm Austin.
Yeah.
I'm reading off.
Oh, really? If you'd like to turn that, if it's easier for you, it's like.
I just thought he was reading off his standing at the door. Okay, great, wonderful. Um, good evening, thank you all for coming. First of all, I would like to acknowledge the varsity cheer team for an amazing fall season and a fourth place in sectionals. I would also like to thank the Booster Club for donating money to, um, our program, which gave us the opportunity to work with UCA. Um, and they were able to come to Red Jacket over the summer, which was a really great opportunity and they taught us a bunch of new techniques for routines in the future. Um, tonight, I would like to bring light to the Cardinal Press, which is our school newspaper. Um, our English teacher, Mrs. Tasto, was put in charge of the newspaper club and she came to me and my friends, um, for assistance with that. Um, this club is completely voluntary. Every Monday, we get together and distribute tests among the group. And our main goal is to inform all students and staff along the rest of, along with the rest of the community, um, with events and information within the school. Uh, the newspaper mentions the Students of the Month from each grade level, which are picked from other people. Um, let me find that, please. There we go. Uh, Staff of the Month and Athlete of the Month as well. Um, we also include end dates for each quarter and marking period to keep everyone up to date, just so kids know when to get their grades in, so they stay on top of it. Um, we also include holiday breaks and sports information, sports information such as football games and/or the scores of basketball games. Um, the paper comes out at the beginning of every month, usually the second week of the month, if you're ever looking for it. You can probably find it somewhere. Um, this month, we decided to incorporate what RJ is thankful for. And by me, I went to two people from each grade level and two staff members. Um, and I asked them what they were thankful for. And we got great answers, so you can check it out in the newspaper. We also included a Black Friday reminder, because who doesn't love Black Friday? And lastly, we also did an interview with Casey Shirdell, who donates to the AP and Gemini classes. Um, donations are the reason that we don't have to pay for these college classes and these tests, which is a really cool opportunity. Because the task schools that I've been to, we did have to pay eighty-some-what dollars just to take the exam. Um, and it's a really great opportunity that we get to experience that for free. Uh, we found out in this interview that her family has been in this community for a really long time, which I think is awesome. Um, and we found out that she's currently in the Seattle area, working for Microsoft. And, um, she attended Red Jacket when she was younger and she always loved art, but also took AP and Gemini classes. And, uh, she contributes to these programs to give every kid an opportunity to take a college course and knock down the cost of their future education. Um, and last but not least, I always look forward to making next month's newspaper with our group. We make so many memories together for us and for others in school as well. Thank you all for listening, I have a minute.
Good evening. Um, first, I would like to shout out, um, all of our teachers who have helped with the National Arts Society's goal to donate items for the Twin Cities Holiday Basket Program. They were all very welcoming and more than willing to help with any donations that were needed. We even have one such teacher here, over there, Mr. Bobkin. Um, today, I plan to talk about the rebranding committee. Um, tonight, I know you will be voting on our recommendation for our graphic designer. And since I have been part of the committee since the beginning, I would like to offer my experience. Um, at first, I was attending Superintendent Barnard's Town Hall meetings, where I was first introduced to the process of how our school was going to change our identity. Um, and due to my attendance and participation in these meetings, Superintendent Barnard approached me to become a student representative of that committee. Um, as a student representative, my job was similar to the work that I do here, but it was the first time that I worked with a group of individuals who were not among my, my peers. Um, even I, as a student in this committee, I really did feel like my input was heard and valued throughout the, the entire undertaking. All of, um, the committee members were very inclusive and especially Superintendent Barnard. Even though he was in the meetings, it didn't feel like he was trying to do it all on his own. And it, I could tell his goal was to give the committee all the tools it needed to come to a final decision on what we thought the next match up, the next mascot should be. Um, we started this process by taking surveys to gather information on people's views of Red Jacket and what symbolism came to their mind when they thought of our community. This survey was sent not only to just the student body, but also to all of the alumni, um, whether they were in the community or not, and just the entire community in general. Um, the amount of work that our school put into getting the most responses possible was truly amazing to me. Through the use of paper surveys, widespread, um, marketing through, um, the newsletter and other such, um, objects, and the communication, um, by mouth, I was, I really don't think they could have done anything better to get as much feedback as possible. Um, after those surveys, um, we did the best we could to incorporate all of, um, everybody's feedback. Um, and after the survey, we narrowed down our prospective mascots and after a long discussion of their validity, we came down to three options. Uh, we then sent out another survey with these three options back to everybody that, uh, the first survey was sent to. And after a close race, we did end up with the Cardinals, as you know. Um, and, uh, after we were done with that massive long first term goal, cause, or first long-term goal, sorry, um, it was kind of a relief knowing that our efforts were starting to come to fruition. And, um, we then decided that it was time to talk about our graphic designer. Um, we looked at a few candidates and we picked who we believe not only was capable, but understood our personality and what we really wanted out of these, this graphic designs that were going to come to represent our school. And I, I really hope the board finds our work and recommendation suitable for the next step in creating our new brand. Even though at times we had differing opinions in the committee, we always came back to a consensus that was best for the school and our community. I've really learned a lot and enjoyed my time with the committee, community, oh, exactly, committee thus far. And I really appreciate Superintendent Barnard's invitation and I'm looking forward to the next steps in learning more than life.
I don't know if you had any questions among the board members or any thoughts for our, for our newest members? I, I don't know how you guys, this is kind of a first time through this, right? So, I don't have any burning questions. I really appreciate your take on things and thanks for getting up there and, uh, you know, um.
We do have one question.
But yeah, if we do have questions, then we can have a little conversation.
How is that going to be publicly distributed? I mean, is it just internal or are we putting it on Facebook or?
Which?
The newspaper?
The newspaper.
Oh, oh, yeah. Newspaper part of the press.
Um, so we obviously have Mr. George approve it. And it will be sent out via email, but we also have, I'm not exactly sure what his name is, but he puts it in an actual newspaper format and then it gets printed out. And we are trying to bring it to places such as Bliss, so that you can have it hand, like, in your hands to look at that information. So we're trying to get it more out, but we're just slowly trying to develop that as we just started in late, not this, late September.
Thank you. That's excellent. In fact, I, I did have a question as you were talking and it was, was this new? Cause I, forgive me if, if I was missing it, but I don't recall us having a newspaper in recent times. So this is relatively new then.
It is fairly new. We had, I recall her saying that somebody else was doing it, but I don't really know what happened. All I know is that it got handed to Kevin Tasto and she kept doing some really good work along with me and my group as well.
Okay, awesome. Well, I'm excited. So, is there, you said middle of the month or second week of the month? Is there one that's, that just came out?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Yes, just recently got published.
Awesome. Well, um, yeah, that's exciting. Thanks for, for putting the effort. It's a really neat, uh, that's a benefit to a community usually, right? When we share the information, so that's pretty cool. And it's the ability to develop a skill. You guys, as I think about this, right, it's, it's, it's a little different than usual, because we actually added two members to the board, right? Even though we, you know, our student members don't vote per se, the idea that how we have a conversation about any given item, to me, I'll be honest, I have to train my brain a little bit, that for sure, we can have a conversation with Randy and Michaela about stuff they presented. And of course, you're welcome to, to offer some thoughts if we're having a conversation about it. I am a, a, a business member of the board, so, um, it's a work system.
They can put in the main office for people to pick up?
Oh, for sure, they will one hundred percent go in the main office. That's probably one of the first places they'll get, like, before Bliss.
Awesome.
Our view of how you perspective, right, it, it shares, I mean, I'll jump to media a little bit, but it, it was a pleasure out behind that board meeting, that, that committee. You did share and it was good collaboration, I think, between everything you said, you said it well.
Thank you. Wow, yeah, when you said jump to that, I was, but you were talking about the branding committee, when you guys, yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, in fact, we have another business coming up, right, uh, to approve the recommendation of that committee, so. Cool. Alright, well, thank you guys very much. Your first official report out as board members. So, presentation, we've got middle school, building, building, we call it building council, building update? Building update, okay.
Uh, I know people often bring, um, the building council or teachers or members of the team, that sort of thing, but I have a young, I have a, a lot of my team has young children and they've done a lot of, like, open house and dance and all that, a lot of, uh, volunteering and they, they're like, they wanted a break from the busy city bill. And I said, okay, and Beth, um, Beth really hit this record really hard. I ripped off her from the car, so she's, she's got some car problems. So, so I, it's, so it's just me, um, and that's, and that's why she's in. So here we go. So, um, I'm, my update was just like, how are we doing? Answering that question and, and doing that, I didn't want it to be just my opinion, so I got information from, um, our building council surveys. We do that three times a year and we survey students, staff and family. And I asked, spent some time with the faculty and asked them, how, how do you think we're doing? And then I interviewed students, uh, much like we did, uh, last year. And I s, focused on these three questions, how are you doing this year? How's school going this year? What's the difference between last year and this year? And I said, you know how, like, you can rise to the challenge? What challenges have you had and how did you, um, rise to that? That, and I took the information and I broke it into three categories. Um, what we're doing well, what we need to celebrate, what we're going to continue to grow. We took some baby steps last year and now we're taking bigger steps this year. And then what I call new growth, what are the new growth? What are the baby steps that we're going to take, um, this year? So this is a clip, I, so I, um, interviewed the students and this is the, um, you know, we put together a clip of some of their answers. Last year, cause I was gonna make you remember, but it's, it was a year ago. Last year, they talked a lot about behavior, the climate of, of the, um, of the school and that sort of thing. So you'll see a difference and, and we'll talk about that.
School's going pretty good. There's been some moments that I, uh, uh, I've enjoyed and some that have been a little iffy, but besides that, it's been pretty good. There have been some, like, hard moments during school and I was, like, confused and didn't know what to do, but I had, like, other people there to help me.
Um, the amazing thing about it is how the teachers understand the students more better, because, um, when a student needs help, the teacher will say, like, you could stay after school, you could give a little bit of help. Um, rather than elementary school, we just get help, like, during school, but when you don't have enough time, you have to do it another day.
Definitely pushed us out of the nest a little more and encouraged us to work on our own.
Um, I like how the teachers always have, like, fun ways of learning. So it's not like you're sitting there being lectured.
Uh, I still feel three fifteen actually right now. Uh, usually, I, yeah, I just go to, like, a sports study hall. Today, I'm going to the English teacher, Ms. Tasto, getting some help with a project that I have missed.
We do fun projects. The teacher makes it easy to explain things, you know? She never too overwhelming, doesn't assign too much homework.
Well, there have been a few struggles, obviously, just like every student. But for me, there's things like, um, band and chorus and extracurriculars that help days run faster.
Uh, I like social studies and ELA because both of them push me and I think it's just a really good time and I like the energy from those classes.
In our study halls this year, we have decided to implement Dear Time, which is drop everything and read. So on Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays for the first ten of the study hall, every student is required to sit down, we put on the Google timer and we read for the first ten minutes. Um, as far as, you know, most of them seem to enjoy that. Um, and it keeps them a little bit calmer even after. Um, so as, after the Dear Time is done, some students will choose to continue reading. Others will move on to their homework, but the room as a whole seems to have kind of settled from the class switch. And so it generally works out to a quieter, more productive study hall for most children.
Well. Alright. So, when I first got here, we had a lot of conversations about behavior and, and, um, uh, the climate was not as positive as it could be. They, remember last year, I said they talked about, feels like prison a few times, they mentioned that. So what, um, when, what struck me about that is we were not talking about education. The teachers weren't, the students weren't. And then last year, I wanted to, um, lay some groundwork to try to take care of that and start to move us in a more positive direction. So what I think is our biggest celebration, and I told Chris today, if nothing else good happens over the rest of the year, those kids talked about education, their classes, um, you know, they had some, they weren't giving up on challenges. There, there's always going to be challenges, but they weren't giving up. So I just think, for me, that is just such a huge step for them. Cause you know, sometimes when you do these, you gotta, you gotta ask a lot of questions and try to lead them somewhere. I didn't have to, I just said, how's it going? And they started talking about classes and, and things like that. So I thought, for me, I think that's a huge deal and I think that's a great thing for us to, to celebrate. And talking about independence and their, the teachers are pushing them. I didn't know Dear Time was going to be a behavior issue, but they, like April said, they're, they're doing it. They're enjoying it. They don't stop at the end of the ten minutes. So I, I think that's a huge victory for us. What else is going well is, um, and this is also part of our building council plan, is our monthly motto for October last year and this year is goal setting. And that's for the, that's for the students. Um, so they are, like, setting goals, they are, uh, outlining action, action steps that they need to take. And then they're, they have a plan to monitor, to monitor that as well. That was also in the interviews too, that we, there was a lot of discussion about that. Our behavior, we're still gonna try to, you know, try to make it as positive as we can. We did reduce referrals quite a bit last year. We're off to a good start with very low referral numbers. We also noticed that we have fewer kids getting sent down to the office. Um, and that means they're in classes more, so we're pretty happy about that. Our staff feels that they get in a very strong and supportive community. So if they're sick or if their spouse is sick and they need to go tend to that, um, they just really talk very highly of how they don't worry about it, because we're all like, we've got you, we've got your classes, you don't need to worry, we're here to help you. And they also feel the community members are very supportive as well. Um, I belong to the, there's a regional middle school principal group and some of their, uh, input is they were, um, they thought it was great that we give kids that voice, which we do. So last year, we did that and we continue this year with, we have grade level assemblies and that's, and I clear all the teachers out and it's just the kids and I and we talk about, they give me information, I give them information. We also share behavior data with them, which most of the other principals were like, we don't, we don't do that. And they thought it was a good idea. And this year, we're gonna share academic data with them as well. We are motivating students in a variety of way, a variety of ways, and we're gonna continue to do that. And we follow our, our building council plan. We don't just do it and put it up in, on a shelf. Every time we have a meeting, that's what structures our, our agenda. Activities for students are going very well. Um, a lot of thanks to, uh, student council, because they do our dances and, and activity nights and some other things. But we did Halloween dress up, Halloween dance. We've had two really good behavior reward days, so if you didn't have any referrals at all that month, you get a special reward. We have two spirit weeks, two spirit weeks. Um, roller skating finally made a comeback, thanks to the TTSA. Um, what was nice about the Halloween thing, you know, the first year we did it, we had to do some coaching with kids and behavior. This year, it went off without a hitch. Um, this is how roller skating started, but we have a group of very fast learners and we went from like this to they could actually skate. I loved how they were helping each other, um, trying to, you know, you know, one on each side of the kid learning how to, how to skate. And I, so I'm pleased at how they're coming together more and helping each other out. We thought we had a very smooth start to the year. Locker day and sixth grade orientation, I talked about last time, um, that was a good first step for us, we had a good turnout. First few weeks of school went well. We had a big change and that instead of having nine periods, we have eight. And trying to make sure everything fits into the schedule and everything goes. It takes a couple of weeks of watching how that all falls out, but it went very well for us. Um, open house, I'd like to say three very smart principals got together and decided to have it all on the same night. And I think that was, that was so great, um, really great for us. We started ours with a photo booth as soon as you came in and I thought it was a very, very good community builder. Um, cause kids could, you know, right from the get-go, something very positive, Buster the dog was there. So you could take pictures with your family, you could take pictures with family and friends, teachers could take pictures with their students or their former students. See who gets that. And it was a great way to start. And last year, it just started with a lot of fun. And that was a, the, the photo booth, I thought was a good community builder. So continued growth through baby steps, last year, bigger steps this year. Um, we're continuing with personalized learning. Uh, the one girl was talking, talking about that they do some fun things, there are some projects. So kids are getting more choice in, in how they're learning. Uh, attendance and tardiness, we formed a team around that, I'll talk about that in a second. But we're making some good improvements there. SEL, um, I, we've struggled a little bit with that, but this year, we decided to do a sixth grade SEL class. Bosie's came to talk with, um, Diane Hay and myself and they thought we were off to a great start with that. So I feel really good about that. Seventh grade can pick up some in health class, where we've really gotta take a look at eighth grade. We do some on the announcements, but, um, next year, we really gotta take a look at how we're gonna do something specific for eighth grade. We do have, uh, Safe Harbers come in and talk about relationships, but we find on something a little bit longer term. Acceleration, um, last year, acceleration was algebra and living environment. This year, we put back into the schedule, um, and accelerated class at every level. So that's a big step forward for us and we'll continue to work on that. Faculty, um, voice, and actually, and choice. So we, we experimented and we thought, we're gonna try to do some teams. Um, it's all voluntary, a lot of people did volunteer, we have seven teams altogether. Um, I kinda said, here's the broad direction you can go into, but they really got to choose the exact direction that they're going to. We had a report out, um, at our last faculty meeting, there might be good progress. We have some set up for second semester, so, um, we're looking, looking, uh, forward to that. Supports, um, AIS is, last year, we had nine periods, we put it in ninth period, so it didn't compete against anything. So this year, we lost that and we're looking at ways to, like, how can we continue to give good service? We just had a meeting with the AIS, uh, teachers and what we're gonna do, instead of, I'm the seventh grade math teacher, these are my AIS periods for the seventh graders. What we're saying is, that may not line up with a free period with a student, but we're looking at, why don't you take some sixth graders a day that they fall into that period? Or take some eighth graders that fall into that period. Then next year in the schedule, we wanna make sure that they don't line up. I don't wanna have two AIS periods, it's one seventh and one sixth. Um, in one period, I'm gonna spread them out. So I would have six periods I could spread out and that way, we should be able to gather more kids up on that. Um, we're using EI, EWI data, kinda did a little toe dipping with that last year. We're doing a lot more with it, with this year, and that falls into the IST. We were very, I've talked to a lot of faculty about, like, how do you hit this after-school help time? Cause from two thirty to three fifteen, um, we're like, let's just try to grow it and try to grow it. And I think that it's, it's done very well. That's off to a good start. At the last faculty meeting, I said, how many people have had kids say after the hall raised their hands? Um, the after-school sports study hall helps us too, cause it helps us draw kids in. So that's a good resource for kids.
Terry, can you help us with some acronyms there? I think I know most of them, but I'm not sure everyone's, so A, Academic Intervention Services?
Yeah, AIS is Academic Intervention Service. So if a student is struggling, um, they, there's a time where they can go and get extra help.
And, and then, I know, you guys, early warning, right?
Yeah, early warning indicators. So it's a chart with all the kids' data and, uh, you know, kids are, the red kids need the most help, yellowed. It's like a warning, uh, there's, um, different avenues we take to try to help them. You know, you know.
Uh, what was IST, that's what it is.
I see it as an instructional support team. So again, if a kid is, a student is struggling, uh, and they might not just be academic, there's other ways to do this level. So that's, we develop a plan and try to help them out.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Good question. So, uh, the after-school or the ninth period, whatever you like, oh. Are the teachers generally in their classroom at that time doing their normal work or are they able to come in for, for extra work while the teacher's in there?
Yeah, it's, you know, technically, it's planned a period for weeks. They totally, they expect kids to come in for help. Kids were frustrated, like, if they didn't have the AIS, they had a hard time, last year, they had a hard time finding a time when they could meet with their teacher. Um, but this after-school thing, it's really, everybody's available, cause they're contractual time ended three fifteen, so they're here. And there's no coaching to compete with either. Um, so for our new growth, we need to, uh, we're starting to take a look at developing a, you know, a long-term literacy development plan. We wanna do more as a school altogether and not just grade level. One example would be the assemblies, of course, so we've done a couple now, like, with the whole school. And that's been a big boost to, um, I think I liked it, like, it's climate boost, really, because when you get your Student of the Month award, you get in front of everybody in the cheerleading, it's, it's been very nice for kids. And you're gonna tie that into, like, the awards night will be during the school day, so they could see what they can earn, what they can shoot for, and they can also collect for their, for their friends. And they can also collect for their, for their friends. Brian George and Brian Weller and I, Brian Weller has the concept of like, let's have Bosse's come in and help develop our, some instructional leadership skills in our department chair. So they can help us carry the instructional leadership around, personalize and learn. Kind of take a little bit of a lift off of us and put it, and put it on that. It's good that we have some help. And Brian and I also have in the departments, there's smart goals for the first time. So that's good progress there. Rather than waiting till the summer or anything, right, starting today, or even before today, all our work that we do, we want to make reference back to the district blueprint and make sure that we're aligning everything. There are work that's already done, we're going back and looking at, make sure we're in alignment. Curriculum, it's curriculum development and analysis. So I think Brian Weller's done a good job of giving the academic data out to, to people. And I told him their first step is to use that to look at, how is our curriculum? Where are the gaps that we have? And then let's start putting together proposals for, working on that over the summer. And also spend some time on vertical alignment of our curriculum from sixth grade to eighth grade and from sixth grade to 12th grade as well. Community building for staff. At every faculty meeting, we do a little activity where they get to get to know each other more. Even though we're a small school, we're close proximity to each other. We still are a little bit siloed, because eighth grade is on one side and our sixth grade's on another. Our specials are in another area. And like I said before, eighth grade SEL, we need to take a, a good look at that and figure out what we're going to do there. This slide, I'm the most excited about, because MTSS is a multiple tiered system of supports. And that's like, alright, the level one is, what sports are we giving to every single student? Level two, students that are starting to struggle. And level three, because it really has some difficulty. So I think the exciting thing for us, you've probably heard of restorative circles. But we're going to do community circles. And we have Bosse's coming in to three faculty meetings. And they're going to not just teach the teachers how to do community circles. They're going to put them in a circle, so they get the experience of that and what the development does over time. And they take that out. And the expectation is, every day, in every class, they take a few minutes and do some circle work, so that kids can build a sense of community, a sense of trust, help us develop some, development of pride. So I'm very excited about that. I can't wait to see how that turns out. Laura Frye and I did some of that over the, over the summer. We spent, I think, three, four days doing that. Tier two, Bosse's is coming in and, and helping us with all this MTSS. We created a behavior team. So students who become frequent flyers, they get a lot of referrals. They spend a lot of time down in the office. I have two of our faculty members, they have six students each. And they're doing a pilot program, an improvementary. And it's just not about, let's stop the bad behavior. We also need a positive direction. So I have some kids that are very creative. We need to help them develop that. We have some kids, I see that there's leadership potential, and we're going to develop that. So I'm looking forward to see what the, what the results of that. We just had another kid watch this. I had a six student. And another student watched this, he's like, I want to join. So we let him in. So now we have seven and six. We used to have attendance meetings, but now we actually have a team that includes a social worker. We're a little bit more structured and we've got some direction. We're just not saying these students were access. We're doing, sending letters, notifying parents. We're having meetings when they have a certain number of accesses. We've added tardy letters to this, plus some consequences. And our tardies are starting to really decline. So that's, we're pretty happy about that. And, oh, so I met with the AIS statues last week to start to, there was a direction that I wanted to have. But in doing that, they decided, we want to be a tier two AIS team. Which is a big, huge step forward for that, for that group of teachers. We never met as a group before. And I think they can take a lot of the, they can make that whole system a lot more efficient, because we're going to meet together and say, alright, this student needs both math AIS and ELA. He doesn't have that kind of room, math and ELA. And other teachers can talk about it and decide where that student needs to go. And help us set priorities for that. And tier three is the IST, the instructional support team. We're going to start to take a look at, we already made one change to some of the forms. We have a much shorter form. So everything we're doing with that student, everything we need to do with that student is all in one short form. Because we have an IST pro form that ends up, when you put all the information in, it can be 15 pages long, that type of thing. So I'm very psyched, because we already started to look at our structure. We have a lot of weekly meetings and a lot of groups that meet. And because of Bosse's working with us, we've really narrowed that down. So instead of a team meeting every week, and it's sort of a broad focus, they meet once a month and it's IST only. They meet once a month and it's behavior attendance and other issues only. The other time, we freed up, so they can actually have time to work on those, those two categories that they need to. And so we freed up a lot of time for teachers and building council. And our, you know, here about the CC team, we freed up some time for them to do some of the work that we're asking them to do. So that's how we're doing. It's where we've been, where we are, and that's where we're headed. So we have, good questions.
I thought that was an excellent update. I feel like in recent history, we've gotten such thoughtful and fairly deep observations of what you guys are working on. I appreciate it. We're very connected, so it's great. Alright.
Thank you.
Mr. Terry, so we've got an update from the, the respective mental health team?
I'm lucky enough to have a few of our collective care teams here with me tonight.
No one had squirrels or anything on the way?
No, not everyone could be here, but that wasn't the plan, so we're okay.
Raccoons are bigger than you thought.
Raccoons. Yeah, they are bigger than you. That's fine. So the three folks that are with me tonight, Jody Roberts is our school psychologist at the middle and high school. Tricia Phillips is our social worker, district level. And then Stephanie Bogens is the high school school counselor. And when we talk about collective care team, it's a new title for us. But it's not a new group of people. It's just how we're structured ourselves and how we're supporting each other as a team. So I'm going to go into a little bit of history of where we've been and where we're going in terms of mental health support of Red Jacket. Where I talk about what collective care team is and the structure and goals of that team. And then the last two topics are regional supports that we're part of. But I just want to introduce you guys to me. So those of you guys who've been with us for a long time know, there's been a lot of change in the last many years. I've been here since 2008, so I started it with that date. Our enrollment definitely has declined in that time. And, you know, that's a challenge we struggled with at district. But as we all know, mental health to me has have increased here and everywhere. So that's not just a Red Jacket thing, that's all over the place. And what I'm appreciative of is the support that's in the district to build our team despite declining enrollment. So when I started here, we had one school counselor at each building. However, the elementary counselor within the military probably has some time in this year. Four of the years I was the school counselor at the middle school, I was also the CSN CPSC chair in addition to that. So it really was me and, I wouldn't even say part, I would say part-time maybe. And the high school school counselor, Lorraine, was by herself. And then we had a school psychologist who was part-time also for a period of time. So we had a lot of challenges with our team. We didn't really have a good solid team. And we were very siloed, because we were so busy, we couldn't collaborate with each other. So we've had some growth in the department in 2015 and 2018. So we've added a couple of school counselor positions. One at the elementary school and one at the high school. The high school one, there's an asterisk there, because the person we hired for that was Tricia, who is a social worker. So when we looked at that position, and we were hiring two people at the same time, we identified a need for a social worker expertise or that kind of background. So we hired that person to sort of be in that department. But that position was kind of a chromatic and a square pole. It didn't really work to fill that position. But we still needed that expertise. So those two positions really was a school counselor and a school social worker just functioning as two counselors. And then two years ago, we added another full-time psychologist. For many years, we tried to have a half-time psychologist, shared through Bosse's. And that was a really difficult position to fill. It changed every year or it was empty. They had to share with a different district. And that was just a hard, hard ask for us regionally. So the other addition that we're hoping for, sorry to go back, is with Flacra. So we're working with Flacra, which used to be the alcohol coalition for the region. But now it's really more about behavioral health. So they are getting a grant when they are applying through NICE out to have a full-time social worker on campus. It's in NICE out approval right now. We're hoping in the winter, we'll be able to fill that and hire that. They'll be on campus with us all the time, which will be great for our students. And so we've almost doubled our mental health team over the past eight years, which I'm really proud of. So we had four and now we have seven. And our ratios are good. The layers of the keys are working well together, so I'm proud of that team.
So if you look at, I'll get the handout with the heart on it. So Karen mentioned that this year, we started the collective care team at Red Jackets. This came out of, at Bosse's, there's a mental health roundtable that we, Karen and I have gone to in May. And this was presented to us, and it's been, it's a New York State kind of whole initiative. So it's the mental health team and the nurses, all collectively getting together to support our students. Um, thank you. Uh, our next, this is, who are currently in the positions as our CCT team? And as you can see, we have four counselors, three currently, one new. We have the two nurses, Sarah Huber and Julie, our new additions. We really had meetings with just the mental health group and Jody and Elise. But now we're adding that extra layer.
Bringing them into the team was really critical. We have different expertise, and it was really nice to pull those members in.
It's great. And then myself and the future Flacra individual. So the structure and goals, to make sure that we are helping students be academically successful. And also ensuring that, you know, the teachers and students are being supported. Let's see. And the meeting structure that we have established, Karen helped establish this, is that, so before, it was the mental health team who would meet with the principals in the building every week. Now it's the collective care team meeting with the principals of the buildings. Karen joins us monthly to be a part of that team. And then quarterly, we're meeting as a whole group for the whole district, which was the list, the list that was prior to this. So we're really excited about this. Karen gets to present at the next mental health wellness workforce.
Yeah, there's a new name, I'll tell you.
There's a new name. She gets to present, because the last mental health roundtable I went to, at Wayneford, West Bosse's, there was a lot of questions around it. And they were, they were, because I had mentioned it, they asked me a lot of questions. And there was a lot of passion around it. So it's going to be great to see that kind of develop through the New York State, the region, and locally. It's kind of exciting to see that it all come together.
Thank you. I mean, our team is largely the same and our work is largely the same. It's how we're doing that work and how we're working together to do that work and not be siloed as much. And that's the piece that we're continually working towards on. When I go monthly, or, the weekly meetings are really focused on students and student meetings. So they're talking about their kids and how they can all support their kids. When I go monthly, it's to look at the systems in that building. Is this working for us? What do we need more or what do we need less of? And then the quarterly, to bring us all together, is the district to really look at all of our positions and all of our roles and get to know each other better. Build trust in our team, because that's important when we're so separate in the buildings. And just help us grow. So I'm excited about that work. Like Tricia said, the wellness, or mental health roundtable is an event that happens three times a year at Bosse's. It's newer in the last few years. And it's the Mental Health Service Professionals Group that started in 2020. And it's grant funded. And they've expanded twice. And there's a new grant with $5 million in the next five years, starting in January. They just changed their title to Wellness Workforce Collaborative. So that's their new kind of branding that they're working towards. There's a school counselor that was a GMA for a long time, Hannah Stellustica. She runs the group. And it's a really nice partnership between many districts and institutions of higher education, state-owned partners and community partners. This was our most recent Zoom that we had, just this last week. You can see there's lots of districts on board there. SOTUS, Seminole Falls and Lions are really the first few districts to get on board with this. And then everyone else has joined on, which has been great. My exception around the new grant is that they're able to expand their coaching program. So all of our mental health collective care team will be able to be assigned a coach in the region that can support them monthly, just like we as leaders of the team have coaches monthly. And I think that's going to be really beneficial for everyone. So the internships, they will be also placing interns. We haven't had school counseling interns here my entire time I've been here. We've had a couple of school psych interns over the years. But they're able to bring in those positions and school social worker students from the colleges. And that's something that, as a district, we really didn't have a lot of student teachers for a long time either. And then post-COVID, we brought all that back. And it's really exciting. It brings energy. It brings, those, those students break our reputation back out into their college communities too. It's good for us as much as it is good for the students. And I'm excited to see that work bringing that into the mental health team as well. I think that our folks are really smart and can help kids grow. But also, we can learn from their new techniques and what they're learning. Professional development throughout the year is that mental health roundtable event. Hundreds of people show up to those every time. It's a really nice, well-rounded group. And as Tricia mentioned, I was asked to present with someone from Victor in February. They started this process in the last year, and that person has retired since. But we're going to put that together about where they are and where we are going. And just answer questions, and be honest about it. Because this is a, this is a process of growth and a process of working through this. And we're not there yet, and we won't be there for a while where this is really solidified. But that's part of it. And so I'm okay with being in the mouth about that. I'm okay talking about that. And allow others to learn that it's okay to work through that and grow and not be, not feel like everything has to be perfect right away. Our team is growing, we're changing. We've had a lot of maternity leaves and different things going on. So we've had some shifts that have made it hard for us to get our foundation. But we're working toward that, so proud of that. And then the coaching program that started in January. One of the other supports regionally that we have is the Trauma, Illness and Grief Consortium. And I have Rebecca Goodman, I S C, join us to present with me about this. We have an internal TIG team that meets, and it's largely the same group we're talking about, that responds to these incidents in district. But also, there's a regional support level that Rebecca helps with, so.
Hi, everybody. TIG is what it's called, Trauma, Illness and Grief Consortium. It started in Monroe County over 20 years ago. And it was right after 9/11, really, is what they were finding. That students and staff were really struggling with crisis and trauma and grief. And how do we, how do we support people? About six years ago, the TIG consortium for Monroe County moved out into Jive up as well as Waynefinkle Lake Bosse's. And so we started training people regionally. Districts had the option to join or get trained and start looking at the skills. And so that really is sort of where we're at now. This year, it became part of a true consortium where districts could join through Waynefinkle Lake Bosse's. And there's a couple of different aspects of it, now that it's a formal, actual open running body. And, let's see, I've got to think where I am. What happens is, when people join the consortium, what they're going to do is they're going to send people to training. And the training is a five-day training. So it's, it's over 35 hours of training. And very specific techniques are taught, they're called protocols. And it is not counseling. I think that's the biggest thing, is people think that there's counselors coming in. And what it is, is structured conversations to help people as they process through either a traumatic event or significant grief pieces. And we have collective training that everybody who goes has the same thing. I think the difference is, years ago, we went district to district. And it's not that people weren't dealing with grief and trauma or traumatic events, but there was no vehicle that all of us had the same process. And so now we do. I want to flip it. Okay. We have a shared purpose. And the purpose really is to help support people as they go through these events. And then the goal is to return, the school's lens is to return people to, they call it normative or typical function. I think when you go through something that's traumatic or a very significant grief process, nothing feels really normal. So I like the word typical better. Like we're trying to get people to that place where we expect people to be upset when they're grieving. We expect normal reactions. We expect normal reactions. And part of it is, is a society is we don't really talk about death and dying and grief very easily. And so it's an uncomfortable topic and I think what we're doing is demystifying it. When somebody hears really upsetting news, we would expect them to be upset and have reactions. But if you don't know that yours is a normal reaction, you start questioning, am I okay? Who am I? Is this all right? And so the way people grieve or experience trauma is also very individualized. And so we've started demystifying that and talking about what happens with the body and that it's not just emotional. People have physical reactions, people have, um, cognitive reactions. So when something really specific happens, you may have that sludgy feeling like you can't think clearly or everything is happening really slow when really it's not. Those are all your body's reactions. And so we have those conversations before and during the training, but also we share that with people when they're going through an experience. Up here it just talks really about what the definition is, what crisis is, um, and how people are experiencing it. You can pop onto the next one. After people go to the training, districts, um, decide, and in our region, 20 of the 25 districts plus BOSI's have all bought into the poster or the, the, the TIG, um, consortium. What does that get you? And I think that's what people are, what is it exactly? The first thing is, is it offers you backup support. So, um, unfortunately your district has experienced quite a few different things that have happened. And so you can call and what it, in our region, how it's built specifically is the superintendent's requested that they make the call, that they make the decide to activate a response or a regional response. So, um, Chris would call the superintendent of BOSI's and say, I think, I think we're going to need some extra help. And so then she gets in contact with myself and, um, Shannon Marshall, who's the director of communication. And then I would call the primary contact, which is Karen for your district. And I'd say, what do you got? What do you need? And so they might say, you know what? We had an unexpected accident, there were a lot of people injured and people are really, really impacted. Can we have some extra people who would come to your school? And that's exactly what happens. It's my job to find people in the region who are also trained, who will come and then support your TIG plan, because that's one of the things you do is you create a TIG plan. Um, and then what does that look like? You might want responders. You might, depending on the impact, say, our people who are trained and really ready to support are so impacted by the loss that we need you to sort of step in front or step next to us and do it with us. It doesn't ever happen that we do it to you, because you know the culture and you're, every, my feeling is, is every district has a culture and a personality. And so if I were to come in and say, you need to do A, B, and C, if that's not going to fly here, it's going to do harm. And so what I would do is talk to people and say, what is it that you're looking for? Are you looking for specific protocols to help people deal with this grief? And then we activate it. Um, recently we were here in the fall, um, we brought, I was here for three days and then, um, another person joined me and was here for two days. Sometimes people want to talk to outsiders, sometimes they would prefer the inside people and sometimes they just need to know somebody standing next to them to help them through it.
And it's not just during the immediate crisis. The situation with the fall was something that we've been dealing with for years and keep raising the support for those ones necessary. And I'm grateful for that because it, the situation we're speaking about impacted our staff in a large way that we can't support each other really well with that. We need extra support for that. So I appreciate that.
And it can bring you back to a place, like if, if we don't deal with the trauma and the grief piece, or even if we have effectively dealt with it and then we hit another trauma or grief piece, it'll send us back to those previous experiences that we've had. Some of the training will tell us that 90% of people will go through it and not need any support in the sense of outside support, needing counsel, needing that handoff to somebody who is a grief therapist. Most people can do that, but there's about 10% of people who sometimes can get stuck based on their experiences, their life experiences, based on what they experienced in that trauma. So what we want to do is wrap around support for those people as well, because what we do know is people can get over it. It just is what kind of support do you need? Um, one of the biggest things is planning proactively, like that is the reactive part of TIG. And that's the part where we're like, uh-oh, we need help, bring in, bring in people to help us. The other parts of joining the consortium is that we have meetings with the primary contacts. Um, we have those at least twice a year. We also have meetings where we're doing training. The techniques that we are talking about, yep, here it is, one of the slides that we use is what are the side keys strategic planning? When something happens, we need to know what the theme is. And one of the things is, is it in fear or is it in grief? Nope, said that wrong. Is it in grief or is it in trauma? Trauma equals fear. Grief equals sadness. Knowing that that's what the root is, that we're helping people experience or helping move through that is critical, because, um, with sadness, we're dealing with the unexpected loss or the expected loss. But with something traumatic, you're dealing with fear. And the first thing that we do is we have to make people feel safe. We have to have them feel safe in order to be able to process what the experience was for them. So right there is the start of it. And then we start using these forms and everybody who's trained and has gone to the training knows what these forms are. What is the target? Who are the people who are going to need that? And the next slide is the circle of impact. And that's one of the ones that is soon as we know that I'm talking with somebody, the primary contact, like we start looking at who are the people who are most impacted by that? That's that primary center, then the secondary and then the third. And then we start an organized and strategic plan to help people and support people in that. Again, none of this is done to someone. We're invited. So somebody may say, you know what? These people in the center really might need a diffusing, which is one of the protocols that we use. I would never say you have to come or, and we don't want districts to say that either. Um, we know that it's beneficial, but we also know what it feels like when things are done to us. Immediately we put ourselves up and we're like, whoa. Um, people have to be ready to experience that. And that's what, the briefing is part of the communication that a school, that a school district does. If you think of your school district as a house, the front of the house is to protect the people and the school district, the outside. When the media comes and parks in your front drive, you want to know that your messaging is consistent with what the message is for the district and goes forward. So that's the front of the house and that's where the communication piece from it. The back of the house, think of that as the people coming in during the worst time and bringing the tassers and bringing the paper products and sitting with you and helping you move forward when it doesn't feel possible. Oh, so what have we learned along the way? Um, we started six years ago in this region and we were just about to completely activate regionally, um, in 2020. We'd had our first meeting in the end of January and we were ready to say, okay, it's not going to be just BOSI's responders, because we learned a lot when it was just the BOSI's responders going out to districts, but it's not sustainable. We were responding approximately every four weeks to some type of tragedy in a district. We learned a lot, but we also learned that that was too much for six people to do over and over while they were also doing jobs in BOSI's. So what we just started was to roll it out regionally, districts helping other districts. And then we decided that when everybody was trying to live the unimaginable during COVID, we couldn't put one more thing on somebody's plate. So we continued to, for the most part, have BOSI's responders do all, um, regional responses. Um, what we did learn is that you have to collaborate and you have to find out who can really respond. Um, quite often your clinical team are the people who were like, oh, it's, it's a natural segue for them. It is, but there's also value from, um, nurses being trained, teachers being trained. They have a different perspective and when we use that collective language, it's much more healthy for everybody. Um, but we also have to say, just because the counselors know, and when I say that, we call them the clinical team, those social workers, your school sites, your counselors, they have to also be able to step back and say, I'm too close to this, this is going to damage me, I need to step back. And so we're really doing a lot in the region saying, you don't have to tell me why, you just have to say, I can't do it this time. And that's all you need to say. Um, so we're really working on taking care of ourselves as well when we respond to people. Collaborative and partnering, like I said, there's 20 different, um, districts who are doing that. I would say there's a large continuum of where people are with their own plans and how successfully they're utilizing them. Um, unfortunately, you've had a lot of experience using your plan, but you also then have got a plan that really is cohesive and there's a lot of honest conversation back and forth of what you need. Um, the regional and the national train, well, actually Barbara's an international trainer, um, who teaches the protocols that are utilized and she's come and supported this district. She volunteered to come, um, in the aftermath a couple of years ago. And then it, she came out and offered her services to work with people, because trauma is really sticky and it's really scary and it's not very comfortable, but it's critical that we start using those skills and moving forward.
And this team meets internally quite a bit. We meet, since this school year started, probably eight or 10 times already, just because of different incidents in families, a sick parent, um, child with an injury, a house fire, anything really that impacts a family that way, that has a bigger impact in our district as well, staff members, who have to do that, or have to be sick, those kinds of things. So there are times where I cut the tab out, it's too much for me and these guys take over. And that's what we can do internally, but when it's too much for us as a group, that's when we can ask for that regional support or if we just need more. It's, we can handle it, but we need more people to help us handle it. And so I'm grateful for this group and I, I've been in for the six years and it has been kind of a weird trajectory we took because of COVID, but I'm glad that we're back, kind of solidified and doing this work in a way that's really meaningful for the region. So thank you, Rebecca.
Questions?
How many, how many in-house people are training for TIG?
Um, all of our collective care team, the seven of us, and then our nurses aren't trained yet, but they're in the process of being trained. I want to expand that beyond this our team though, because I, what she says is really important and I was speaking with, um, Jill Swarth, who's our cafeteria director, she, or conservator's director, at Midlake's, they have one of their secretary, you know, because she should have a skill set that's unique. And so really being outside the box in the next couple of years, getting more folks trained that are beyond just our group, I think is important, because those viewpoints, like we talked about within our group are important, but expanding that's important to me. So how, say, if you're, for example, or?
We have like four right now in training, we've had a lot of transitions, so there's some.
Luckily, people can go to a training already, so it's just been helpful. So we haven't had to get them, because it is five days and it's not five straight days, because it's heavy, heavy work and it takes, you know, over a year, you get trained and so, um, it's a process, but.
Yeah, I love the idea of collaborating and having other, I, myself was just, uh, went to Webster to support their district, uh, as a, you know, a member of TIG. It's just really nice to have someone who's outside of it, but also trained and that can support everyone. It's a good feeling of, of community. I, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, it gives you a sense of being able to breathe a little bit when you're walking the unimaginable. The other thing is, um, in our region, what, we've just met and talked about, what do we need? And one of the things that we heard loud and clear is people are struggling with memorials in their district, what's in their board policies, what's not, as well as booster training. And so that's something starting in January, um, like I do, um, office hours will start in December and where people can just come with questions, they can call me at any time. Um, my cell phone is 24 hours a day. Um, but you can call at any time or hey, I'm going to pick your brain, what can you have, what resources do you have? Or we have this, something strange is happening and this family needs some support of siblings. Do you have anything for kids who've lost a sibling? And so we actively are, are sharing it. But the other thing is, is boosters. We need some boosters on some of the trainings and the protocols we do. And, um, that's something that we're excited to start in January as well is, and then how do we do that? Uh, initially we want to do some of them in person, but the other piece is how do you get people to go to a training in person? So we're doing some online as well, like, okay, let's do, let's go back to Zoom and use some of that of how do you structure, how do you use those tools or how do you do a debriefing or a diffusing when you haven't practiced those skills in, you know, four or five years? So we're excited.
It's really pretty, our whole team out on any given day for anything, because when we gave us the minutes, it's taken ahead, right? And so the mental health roundtables, I worked really hard on these guys to rotate and try to figure out what makes sense for them. If they go to one a year, that's great. If they go more, I appreciate that too, but I don't expect them, although it's too hard to make that commitment to do that, but, um, looking at the topics and what makes sense to each group is, um, I do for us, so. So we got a lot we're doing. Any other questions about the other presentations? Thank you, guys.
Thank you. All right, a lot of great presentations. Thank you, everybody, for that. At this point, we're going to move on to personnel. Hopefully you all had a chance to take a look. As per usual, as a courtesy, I was going to check in what I remember to do by consent. We're all good? All right. On recommendation, the Board of Education found the recommendation of the superintendent of schools pursuant to education law approves the consent agenda items as presented. Motion? Governor Chelsea?
Second.
Second agenda. Uh, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries? Thank you very much. Set from personnel. And CSE and CPSC, um, we begin a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. We're, we're in the press release. Board of Education found the recommendation of the superintendent of schools pursuant to education law approves the CSE and CPSC recommendations as presented. Good motion. Motion Chelsea and a second from Scott. Do we have any questions on those reports? You know, we have plenty of resources here. Keep it going. Okay. Um, all in favor?
I'd say thank you.
What's that?
Good time to say thank you.
Yes. All right. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries? Thank you. Reports and correspondence. Claims auditor report. Is there any questions on that? Pretty simple, looking crazy going on there. Okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Bernard for his superintendent report.
Thank you. I, I want to start just by thanking everybody tonight for, that's here, to our staff that stayed extra to help us out tonight. Thank you for coming in and presenting for collective care team, middle school, our new, uh, student reps. Thank you to everybody who presented this evening. One of the themes that I wanted to share tonight, um, in addition to all of the great, uh, work that we heard this evening is that I, I wanted to take a moment to celebrate, uh, just what I've observed, particularly over the last month across our district. Um, and it's really the amount of family engagement that you see when you spend time in our district and how this has grown and developed, um, just in, in my first two years. And there's just some examples of the, 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 the Fall Festival at the elementary school, anybody who was able to attend, the number of, not only folks that attended from our school and our community, but the number of community members that volunteered their time to come in to support that learning outside of the school day for our students and the connections that that provides our community and our students. Um, and then we also had an opportunity at the high school level where we did some fun Halloween celebrations that was new. And, uh, Mr. Rappel led a great charge that, um, allowed our students to be engaged in some fun and safe activities here at school, um, that we haven't had in the past. Um, if you went to athletic events in the fall or even in the early winter athletic events and you see the number of parents, grandparents, um, aunts, uncles, staff members that are, that are there, it's, it's always just such a reminder of how important that is to our school and our community. And then the last one I'll share is Tuesday night I had, uh, my town hall and then walking back through, the elementary was doing their evening conferences and the number of folks that are here committed to that connection with the teachers and that, and, and our teachers' commitment to the connection to the staff's, Jeff's commitment to being here with his staff during that time as the building principal. Um, I, if, I can't say enough, and if you've experienced other places, you know, but that's not always the norm. It is not always the way that it works and the way that it operates. And, you know, I can't thank our staff and our families enough and our leadership team, And, you know, I can't thank our staff and our families enough and our leadership team because that collective partnership is what is the most vital aspect to our student success. Open conversations about how our students are doing, open conversations about how to best support our students is the most vital thing that we can do with the team together. So thank you for everybody that takes part in that and, and this fall has been a perfect example of that. And I hope we all carry it through and build it stronger through the winter. Quick capital project, the board members who are on the committee, they can share more in a moment. Barb and Matt are a part of that. Just starting this week, I wanted to share for everybody that myself, Mr. Burns and Mr. McCarthy have started what we're calling our Capital Project Roadshow. So Mr. Burns and Mr. McCarthy last night presented to our local ladies Lions Club about what our capital project will be going and looking like hopefully for that vote that's going to be in, on January fifteenth. After we close our meeting tonight, we, the website will immediately be updated and have all of that new capital project information there. And we'll be communicating regarding that tomorrow so that everybody can see what that entails. Pictures, a message from me about our hopes around that, who was on the Capital Project Committee, so all that information will go live tonight, I believe, at seven thirty. So the last thing I want to just share is that this time of year is incredibly busy. It's one of the best times to be in a school system because of all the fantastic opportunities that we have. I would remind families that the website, Parents Square, social media, the physical district calendar are incredibly valuable right now. I just want to list a couple of reminders for folks. As we know, next week we go into our Thanksgiving break. Then when we come back on December second, we have an incredibly busy time with our winter concerts on the tenth and eleventh for the middle school and the high school. We have another board meeting a week right before we go on break. And then we have our winter recess from twelve twenty-three to one three. So folks, just a reminder that the, the paper calendar is a great resource, but also the district website is, is live and updated. Parents Square constantly is sh- is sharing and filtering both internal information, but also external community events as well as our social media. So if you have questions, also copies of the, of the calendar for folks are in every office and in district office as well. So I know it's a great holiday season looking forward to some great events starting this week and rolling right through to the new year. That's it.
All right, so next up is committee update. So do we have updates from Capital Project Committee on the Board?
Well, we met last week and, but I see under new business, he's going to, Chris, are you going to be talking about that under new business?
No, it's just, uh, tonight is just the approval of the referendum. So we have some, by the way, we have some business related to both committees, but please do feel free to share with us your perspective. Obviously, we did the materials for the meeting, but to hear from you guys is great.
Well, I'm, I'm fairly financially conservative and I understand where the community wants to be and where they are. And I can say after multiple meetings, I think this, what we've got proposed, even though it's, it's big dollars, I mean, it's twenty million dollars. If you want, if we're at A, you want to get to B, this is the most efficient way to get to B and have the things that you want for your neighbors and your kids, your grandkids, you know, whatever. And it's tough to explain it all in one setting of what's in there and what the long-term goals are. And well, with any construction project, you, you don't just think for the next year, year and a half, two years, you, you think out twenty years. You know, when you build your house, you, do I want twenty-year shingles or do I want thirty-year shingles? You know, so you want, you want to plan ahead that far. And I think that the approach that we've got with this program now or with this layout now and the priorities, I think, I really think this is the best approach that can be had. You know, nobody's got a magic wand, nobody's got lakeside parcels attacks, you know, it's right there. But I feel, I still feel that this is a very reasonable, very responsible, and it will push us ahead from where we are. And I'm really happy about the, it's been a long, long time I've actually seen the school actually reach out to say. It's not just about the island of the school, but it's the entire community and trying to pull things together. So there's only one pot of money, let's make the most of it. It's not going to be perfect. We know we can go in that direction. We're not going to have all the answers right away, but eventually we'll get there. But you have to take that first step to start going that way. And I, I think if people attend Chris's presentations and Tim's presentations, I think they'll understand the thought process of this first step. And it's going to be, this twenty million is a lot. It is the first step, but you have to plan ahead and you have to start down that road if that's where you want to go. It's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that it hadn't started twenty years ago because this community would be different had you started it twenty years ago.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Matt, for, I can see you guys have done a lot of hard work there. Appreciate you sharing that. Barbara, I don't know if anyone else. Did we want to share anything from the Board?
I have nothing more to add, but Randy was amazing presentation in the beginning.
He kind of summed it all up, didn't he?
He did. Your mom's here now, you should do it again.
I know, I was like, man, did I? I did last today, I guess, but you did know it, yeah.
And I, I think the final, the, the most recent development, right, is was the selection of, 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 uh, someone to handle the, um, the graphic design, right? So that's what we'll see coming up in the business. Did you want to add anything, Oliver? You pretty much said it earlier.
Uh, yeah, I think I said my piece on that.
All right. All right, well, thank you. Okay, and, and the final thing under reports and correspondence and kind of like last meeting, I'm going to, I want to share a little bit about our board goals. In fact, one of our goals is to make sure we're sharing what the goals are that we set and what updates we're making on, or what's the progress is toward those goals. And of course. Okay, so I have. Tim, you're not amazing way to share this up there, do you? You, is that, okay. Well, I'm just going to talk through it. So I have here six or seven bullet points of things we've been doing recently. So this is just highlights. I shared a little bit, I think, last meeting, I think the goals the board set. I went through it quickly. So with respect to, one of our goals was to continue and expand our student board member program. We're really excited, obviously, this morning our new student board members, last meeting, and we're going to continue that. So that's something we're obviously making great progress through. Thank you, Randy and Michaela. A couple other items we were, we wanted to work on was to continue and expand the use of committees to increase board effectiveness and to document a policy review. So we just actually heard from two of our committees. It's an approach that in recent years, until essentially last year, I haven't seen a whole lot of. I know, I'm sure the board has done it in the past, but something we've leaned into and it seems, I think you see general agreement from folks that it's working well. We'll be adding a policy committee. I know the board received some information from Superintendent Bernard. I'll be following up to talk to you more. We're going to begin our policy review, which is actually one of our other goals that I just mentioned, begin that work in January. It'll be quite an effort, but we've got a plan for how we prioritize what policies require review and any potential adjustments as efficiently as possible. Couple more quick ones here. We've set a goal to recognize and celebrate district accomplishments at Board of Education meetings. So we want to do a layer, we do so much of that throughout the district. We love it. Board also wants to be part of that, right, and have this forum be a way also to celebrate and recognize folks. And we did some of that at the last meeting in October, recognize our employers. We have a plan to do that for retirements and there's a few other things we want to recognize. And then twenty twenty, so goals for this year, of course, we're, here we are talking about it now, this is part of that process, so. And then a big one for us was reviewing district achievement data to make sure the board is into needs of the district. In this case specifically academic, of course, we're always trying to stay tuned to what the district needs. That's part of our, our role here. But we had an excellent session. I want to thank Dr. Weller for sharing and, and Superintendent Bernard for sharing s- some great views of di- of data that, around academic performance and some historical data. And that tethered really into some of the professional development recommendations and things that we as a board want to be able to support for the district to help ensure we're getting the best academic outcomes. So we did a great session on that. That was part of our goals. And then the final one was for the board to participate in work sessions, which is something we have done in the past, but making the most out of what topics we cover during those work sessions. But also external professional development. I didn't get a chance to share in the last meeting because we didn't have a lot of time. But I did end up going to the four county general membership meeting in early October. And I know other board members have gone in the past to the four county, they're one of the local school board organizations that participated. That was a great session. They had Adrian Hale, one of the New York State Regents, presented and he talked on a couple of topics. One of the big ones was around like regionalization and how to increase cooperation among districts. Really as a reaction to some of the stuff that the state is pushing down on consolidation and things like that, try to help us work through that. I won't go into it all right now, but I would say one of our goals, maybe an opportunity, is to try to get more of us to some of those meetings. And I think what we said was we wanted to share back. So it's tough when we have a lot going on at a, at a given night to take the time for that. But I've shared a little bit, I think, with you about some of the things specifically from the, the four county meeting. So it's one of those things where if you get an opportunity and you're taking one of the four county schedule and we'd love to have more folks on the board.
They do a wonderful job. They're great speakers and learn so much. Being able to collaborate with other board members on the region is always awesome. Kind of, we would like to go again too.
So those were the highlights that I wanted to point out with respect to our goals. Is there anything you guys can think of that, I mean, we've done all kinds of great stuff. I mean, I, the board has set, I think I said this last week, last month, goals for ourselves, for our work on behalf of the district are more ambitious than I've seen. And, and I'm really proud of that on our behalf. So is there anything else you guys want to share before we wrap up this topic? Well, thank you for all those good things. And with that, I will move us along to financial reports. So we've got the treasurer, treasurer report. Is there any questions on the treasurer reports, you guys? If not, I'll go ahead and accept those on behalf of the board. And now we've got new business. We've got quite a few items to get through here. Thank you everyone for your patience so far. It feels really late, but we actually started about an hour and twenty minutes ago. We had some great presentations. I think back to meetings, and this, this would be like a, a light night, but it does feel like we've been here for a while. So I'm going to do my best to move through this, but I don't want to let that stop us from having the conversation going on, so. Item A is mascot creation. I'll go ahead and read the resolution and then we can have discussion if needed. The Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the brand new committee recommendation to accept Wayne Fingerlace Voces as the agency for the creation of the new Cardinal mascot. Motion from Chelsea and a second from Amy. Very good. We've already kind of touched on this a few times. Are there any questions or comments before we vote? Awesome. This is exciting. I can't wait to see the results of that relationship. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. Middle School, Washington DC trip. The Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the red jacket middle school trip to Washington DC, March twenty-sixth through twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. We have a motion. Motion from Scott and a second from Amy. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't.
If we have questions, hopefully someone here has answered. Very good.
The rest is still continuing.
Yeah, an opportunity to support, I presume, is a, a, a pretty awesome trip for the middle schoolers. All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C, we do this annually. Most of you have seen it. This is the Lehigh Bailey Snow Riders Club. The Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the attached resolutions to license the S forty-five trail to the Lehigh Bailey Snow Riders for recreational snowmobiling. Motion Chelsea and a second from Amy. Thank you. Any questions or conversation for that? Hopefully they'll get some snow this year. I don't think they got to use it last year. Not snowmobiling, but.
Not one day last year.
Yeah. Do you snow a bit?
Yeah. One of the trail coordinators.
All right, very good. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Was that an aye, Matt?
I'm, I'm not voting because I'm a trail coordinator for a while.
That's all right.
So that would kind of.
I think you're all right.
All right, well, I definitely approve of that.
Okay, all right. Any opposed? None. All right, very good. Thank you. Memorandum of Agreement with Red Jacket Faculty Association. Board member of, sorry, Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the memorandum of agreement with the Red Jacket Faculty Association. Motion from Matt and a second from Chelsea. Thank you. You guys have details to pick with. Any questions? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. And in a similar vein, we've got a, an MOA with the RJFA. The Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the memorandum of agreement with the Red Jacket Faculty Association. Motion from Amy and a second from Matt. Thank you. Anything from the group? All right, very good. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Great. Yes, okay. So we've got a third item. This is MOA with CSCA. Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the memorandum of agreement with the Red Jacket Civil Service Unit. Motion from Chelsea and a second from Scott. Any questions here? All right, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Very good. We are moving right through it here. Item G is with respect to the environmental impact analysis for the capital improvement project. Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the twenty twenty-five capital improvement project seeker per the attached resolution. And we have a motion for that. Matt and a second from Scott. Thank you. Any questions on that? All right, all in favor? All, all in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? None, all right.
Amy's about to, I missed him second it.
Oh, it was met, yeah.
Scott, okay. Scott and Matt. Yeah, I got mad. I just blacked out when Scott did it.
You all right?
I'm okay.
Very good. And item H, not to bury the lead here, but with respect to our, the resolution for our capital improvement project. The Board of Education upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools in pursuit of education law approves the twenty twenty-five capital improvement project resolution per the attached resolution. Motion from Chelsea and a second from Matt. Any conversation from the group? We had a, for Matt, obviously thank you already for sharing your thoughts in, from the committee update. Any other thoughts on this as far as?
I hate spending twenty million. It's the best.
Right, right. I don't know, I mean, no, I'm sorry, Chelsea, do you want to?
Oh, I was fortunate enough to see Jeff and Tim's roadshow yesterday at the Lions Club. And it, I, I thought it was a very nice presentation, very informative, and I think the feedback I received after was really positive also.
Awesome, great to hear.
Just to add to that, all the presentation dates, locations and times will be on the website tonight too. Some of the ones that are upcoming, where they'll be, what community groups we're doing them with, town hall, all of those things will be on the website tonight too. So folks that want to attend just know where to go.
Is there information for folks who may not make it to one of those but want to consume the?
All on, it'll, the website, all, all. It'll have the scope of the project, timeline of the project, cost, percentage, all of those things will be on the website.
Two minutes, okay, thanks. Guess we better hurry up. Very good. So any, any, anything else before we vote? All right, so for the capital project resolution, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Motion carries. Very good. Thank you. It's live. We're, we've been created by two minutes. Okay, and the last. Okay, and the last item before we adjourn is an acknowledgement of the high school musical, just an opportunity to make sure that everyone's on the same page with, with the great work that the music department has planned.
Can I, can I, just so that, this was based on conversations last spring from the board, of how do we, do we have a process with how we confirm what our musical is in a selection process? So we worked through the summer to create a selection process that was, that we utilized. We're also partnering with RBCL to get their insight. Our principals, I gotta give a shout out, have been awesome through this process, because it starts with them and ends with the district office, myself and Dr. Weller. And what that outlines is going through the process in which the musical, the, the department, music department brings some recommendations forward, meets with the board, talks about adjustments, talks about the appropriate audience, sorry, not the board, with the principals. The principals, and then the principals send that recommendation on to district office for us to have conversations on, and then we present it here tonight as an acknowledgement for the board so that everybody understands how we end up with a final selection for a musical. And this year being that we started that process, we did have to adjust the dates, so the board will see the dates adjusted a bit, so that'll be, that's why the dates were adjusted, because we had to move back a little bit, because the process took time. So, we wanted to make sure that the process was done well, and the principals did a fantastic job, and that's why the, you'll see the calendar dates have shifted on the musical as well.
Chris, Chris, on that, with this, with this new process, are we selecting like a couple of years in advance so that they can think about sets, redesigning sets, or reusing, or, you know, efficiencies that in that way?
So. This year, no, but great minds think alike, because Mr. McCarthy said to me yesterday, like, we should be doing this when the first, when the musical ends in March, or, or in April, we should be doing the next one for the next year, like, we, we should be doing it in that setting, the spring or the, or the spring, the winter before, so we have a twelve, eighteen month window to do that. So yes, that is the plan. Right now it is not, but it will be starting this spring.
And I, I'm sure like many of you, I, I don't, I think I've been to the musical the last several years without failure, they've always done a great job, so. We did not weigh in on this, that I'm aware of, unless, you know, trust the process, we have some great folks working on it, and appreciate the visibility, so. Did I read the resolution yet? I don't think I have to. Oh, oh, this is, oh, this is an acknowledgement, okay, I thought we had to vote on this. So, very good, okay, well now we all know. So, shall be acknowledged. That is it. Is there anything from the board before we adjourn? Thank you all for your time, thanks for those of you who joined us. I will need a motion to adjourn, if we could, from Amy, and a second from Jen. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Thank you, all right, we are adjourned.